Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Of course, you always are different.
We're here.
We're seven different people. I prioritize.
No.
I see their priorities.
I haven't tried to tell us anything.
And then on the floor, I had that scheduled before, I mean, so.
But I'm guessing that was by hiring.
I'll be here.
Probably the number he dredged up.
Yeah, I'll show you.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
What I like about Charlie is it's about thinking of.
Tomorrow, interesting to see the options when he comes up. It's really good. With finances.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I had him the last time he was on.
Down the last two years.
Sure. I think you're bringing me a check.
He gets lucky in that area because.
There was.
Just remember that.
I like flowers, so that'll be great.
They taste terrible.
It's good to have state stability.
It tastes terrible.
So good. Doesn't look like this is the top one that they presented. That was from.
I'm. Congress. There's a hint.
Get prepared.
So we can ask for less.
Wear your glasses.
Yes. I say we take that and if. That's what should be. We try to give all these people.
I wish.
Forty thousand dollars extra.
They're heavy, they're really heavy.
But we do have, we did have the budget for eighty-six hundred. So you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That's my opinion on it. I'm not saying we go less.
This is Dr. Barry's. Can you get this one?
Okay.
We never did get that email.
You need a pen for tonight.
I don't want to have it right here.
So we have this.
They are.
I need to copy you. The other thing. So on Sinclair.
Yes.
Do you like to be easily like turned for the main city in twenty-eight?
Okay.
Anytime somebody does copy it, I will copy it.
Okay. That sounds really good.
Does that sound good? What do you mean?
I've got my glasses on. I'm good.
Outside, so these are these, one, these are two.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Oriental because it'll be splitting.
I do a classroom after, don't matter.
Yeah.
Is Christopher out in the field?
Yes, he's probably not going to make it. He called me, he's out on location trying to get a pump working. I said, you're going to be late, because probably not at all.
So.
So are these in order?
Yeah, because they know their times.
What I mean is, is, okay.
And then these are in order to what.
Yeah, whatever this says right here is how they're in the book.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
At least it should be.
So you don't have to see what you're doing?
Right. Are we ready?
Did you get some people hired?
Not just yet.
Not yet. Hang in there.
Okay, I'll call this work session to order. It is six o'clock. And the first thing on our agenda is to, is the Children's Advocacy Project. So I'll turn the floor over to you.
All right, thank you. Okay, guys, hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
I'm Stacy Nelson, I'm the executive director at Children's Advocacy Project. So for those of you guys that may or may not know, so we do forensic interviews, which are the specialized interviews for instances when there's child abuse allegations. So we work with lots of jurisdictions. There are only three accredited centers in the state and one that's working on becoming accredited out of Riverton. So there are not very many. So since we're kind of centrally located, we work with a lot of jurisdictions. So last year, we, for calendar year 2022, we did twenty-two interviews for you guys. The year before was eighteen. So it was, it was up again. And that was even with quite a few cancellations for weather in November and December. This year's been crazy for weather. But the majority, as I said in our present, in what I sent you guys, all of the cases for your jurisdiction this time were all sexually abuse related. One was child pornography, which that statewide for all jurisdictions, we do. We did two-hundred-and-eighty-two interviews last year, and the majority of them were sexual abuse cases. We are seeing an increase in the ICAC cases, which is the Internet Crimes Against Children. So a lot of that pornography-related things. We also, you know, the physical abuse, we do the witness to violence. So we've had, we had one witness to homicide. So we interview those kids to, you know, part of that is to determine how much trauma they've endured or witnessed or something, so we can kind of help lead them in the right direction for therapy. So for your kids that come to us, we help refer to therapists that are in the region or, you know, that are here that can help with that more severe trauma that they need to have addressed. So, so that's, that's kind of the breakdown. We also work with victim advocates in your area, so we work together. We have our own full-time victim advocate that helps and, you know, just visits with the family, tries to talk to them about what, help them through the victim's compensation process, but also, you know, try to give them a heads up about what they might see from their kids after they do the interview. Sometimes the kids are very relieved, but then the reality sits in, so a few days later they might have some trouble, or a month later, anything. So our advocate follows up with them periodically, just to see if they're doing okay and see if they need any resources and help with referrals, things like that. So far, this, the last couple of months, we've done four interviews this calendar year for you guys, which is pretty, pretty similar as compared to previous years. The one thing that we are excited about that we added, which just occurred in February, we finally got our CAP Symposium back, which is the training that is specifically for investigators, whether it be the Department of Family Services investigators, law enforcement, and then the prosecutors and interviewers. So we had fifty-seven people register. Several were from your jurisdiction. We had one prosecutor from here, and I'm sorry because I can't remember her name. I hadn't met her before, and I'm sometimes not great at names. But they, several of them couldn't come because the roads got closed. But when we put on that training, so I worked with the National Criminal Justice Training Center, and they brought two interviewers in. We usually meet as a team in Casper to get, you know, some feedback on what kind of training would be beneficial. So this specific one is called Following the Evidence, and it's a lot of information about what they, what investigators can do after the interview to follow up on what some of the things that kids had said. And we got some very positive feedback. I have one investigator, not from here, but it was, he'd been to several, and he said it was one of the best ones he'd been to. And I had another one say that they appreciated it because sometimes they get, you know, they get really focused on what, what they need to do. And it was kind of a good reminder to look outside the box, kind of, and look at some of those things. So all of those, of course, help in the long run with the prosecution as far as gathering more evidence and, you know, holding more people accountable and hopefully getting some good sentences. But even, even when it doesn't go that far as trial, we can, you know, the main thing is giving those kids the chance to speak up and talk about what's been happening to them. So I'd say especially in sexual abuse cases, but it's in all the cases. So, so we're, we're excited. We're already planning the next one. We've had some requests to try to focus on some medical-based training, so bringing in some specialists to talk to investigators about the right questions to ask when they have a physical abuse case, because we've had some, some instances, we've had some pretty horrific ones the last year or so of some pretty little kids that we couldn't even interview because they're too young, but even the doctors were saying, well, you need to ask more questions. And our investigators are saying, but we are not doctors, we don't know what to ask. So we were talking about bringing in some specialists that would help. So when we do get that, we will still invite, you know, all the different investigators, because we invite them from everywhere. And I do get that approved through post, which is the Peace Officer Standards and Training, so that they can get post-credits for that. So we're working on the next year, so. So that's one of the big things that we've added for this. We haven't been able to do it for a few years due to funding and COVID and all that good stuff. So we're glad to be back on track. So our, our request, we went that far, we're asking for five thousand, five hundred, which is the same as the last several years. And that covers, you know, about, if you do the math, like how the state kind of converted when they were trying to figure out how much it costs, it's about fifteen kids approximately is what that would help cover. And that's for the prep and, you know, our forensic interviewers, if they are subpoenaed to court, they will come. We don't charge, well, we don't charge law enforcement families, anything like that. And so we don't charge for the court, you know, appearances either. They just testify to help with the case. So. Do you guys have any questions?
Is most of your funding city, county agencies, but do you do fundraisers and that kind of thing as well?
We do, yes, we do fundraiser. I write lots of grants. And then we have two fundraisers a year. Our primary one is in June, and that's our, it's a typical dinner auction, all that good stuff. We're bringing in a comedian this, this year. And then the second day is a trap shoot contest. We have teams, five-person teams that just, it's just more of a fun day. We have lots of law enforcement and different teams, and then community members do that. So we hope, we're not huge like some of the big fundraisers in Casper, Boys and Girls Club, they always make a ton. I wish I knew how they did that. But we make about forty thousand if we're, if we're really having a good year.
That's a really good fundraiser around here.
Yeah. Relative, right?
That's really good.
So, yeah. So those pamphlets that I gave out to before I started, those are our annual report, and we do those every year. I don't know if I've ever brought one, sometimes the printing, but this one.
Really nice.
It's kind of a compilation of twenty years, so some of those case highlights are twenty years since we just finished our twentieth year. So with that, we exceeded five thousand interviews in those twenty years, and unfortunately it's getting busier, but I'm glad we're there for those kids, so.
Well, Stacy, we really appreciate what you do, and, and none of us want to do that job. It's sad that we need people to do that, but we appreciate your presentation, and I don't mean to cut you short, but we're going to have to move on, and, and thank you for what you do.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next thing on our agenda is the Stepping Stones Youth Home, and I'll turn the floor over to you guys.
Hello. First off, I'm John Tangstall, the Senior Director of Youth and Outreach, and I have Maddie Urban, our Director of Stepping Stones here in Rowlands. And I just want to say, this community, we're so thankful for it and the support you have all shown us, it's been tremendous. As a reminder, Stepping Stones is an eight-bed facility, and we serve kind of those forgotten kids that we don't think about, those kids that are having problems at home. They might be waiting for a higher level of care. They might be transitioning back from a higher level of care. We provide a safe place for those kids to heal, get the help that they need, and most, most importantly, they, they're, they're able to stay in the community. So they're able to go to their school, they're able to do track or whatever sport it is, they're able to stay here and do the, the stuff that kids should be doing versus having to be removed and going to a different community because this resource isn't there for them. Last year, we served fifty-four youth. We, one thousand three hundred and eighty-four residential days of service. We had a ninety-five percent successful discharge rate, which means there were, there were only a couple that we, we just couldn't serve. Their behavior were too much, we had to, we had to discharge them based on that. So we're not having kids run away. Staff are doing a good job of managing the behaviors the best they can. And then I think one of the most important things that Maddie and her team have done, and I think is really important, is for kids to learn how to serve their community. So we put an emphasis on community service, and we did a hundred and eighty-eight hours of community service from February to December. And now it's everything from helping at the water crisis to picking up trash, to helping at the rec center with youth soccer, Salvation Army bell ringing, a little bit of everything. So that, that's an important piece of our, our program. So we're asking again for twenty-five thousand this next year. Does anybody have any questions? We're very, very thankful for you.
What fundraising have you done or have planned this year?
Yeah, so Volunteers of America has a whole development team, and they're, they're working on that. We had a kind of a breakfast this week. The development team had breakfast down here, starting to build those relationships within this community. And then we have a whole grant team that works on finding grants that could be helpful in this, or, or that we could use with the youth here, so.
Anybody have any questions? All I have to say is thank you for taking over that crisis center. I, it's such a necessary item. You know, we didn't have a crisis center for a long time, and I, you heard the speech earlier this week, but what would happen is, you know, the parents would be shooting at each other or, or the, whatever, stressing the home, had to get apart. Before we had the crisis center, they would take these children and put them in the backseat of a deputy's car and, that they probably didn't know, and maybe be on the worst roads in the world and drive them to Casper where they didn't know anybody, and it just killed me. I just, it just, that is not how to serve the children. So the county built the, the, the crisis center and then ran it for a while with Cathedral Homes, and they, they quit. And thank God that you folks picked that up and have helped us with that, because it's a very necessary service. And you're doing, I, I can only judge by what I hear, but I think you're doing a, a great job.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you for doing that.
It's a privilege to serve this community, honestly, so.
We need you.
Yeah.
Anything else? We got a few more minutes here, we can talk to these folks. All right, well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maddie.
Running a little bit ahead of schedule, but we'll hear from the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you, Mayors and Council. If you guys do not know me, I'm Teresa Pacheco, I'm the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Carbon County. Currently, we have one hundred and eighty enrolled members at the Boys and Girls Club. The average daily attendance is fifty. We expanded in two thousand and three to Hannah. They have an average daily attendance of twenty-seven, they have thirty enrolled. Our club focuses on priority outcomes from academic success, good character and citizenship, and healthy lifestyles. We run a Power Hour, which provides homework, health, academic enrichment, and reading with an onsite tutor. As a matter of fact, our onsite tutor is a retired high school teacher. She's a grandma, so we call her Grandma. We provide free snacks and meals and programs in our program to meet the nutritional needs. In two thousand and twenty-two, we served four thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-four snacks at no cost to our youth, with two thousand three hundred and eighty-five snacks during the summer. We also provide meals. We provided seven hundred and sixty, seven hundred and six during the school year, with another seven hundred and seventy-nine during the summer. We serve all children of all ages. Nineteen percent of our memberships are from single-parent homes. Twenty-two of these families are, provide free and reduced lunch at the school district. Our membership is from kindergarten to age twelve to twelfth grade. We do have kindergartens come in during the summertime so that we can get them acclimated to the club, so when they start first grade, so they know what the club is all about. We operate Monday through Thursday from three to six, on those school days, we're open from seven-thirty, eight AM until six at night. And we open up nine weeks during the summer and all day through the school year. We do do fundraising, our annual fundraisers every year. Last year, we actually brought in twenty thousand, which was pretty impressive. The kids actually do fundraising throughout the year. This last Saturday, they, they did their first tea party, which was kind of nice, see the girls all dressed up, and they brought their little friends in. We didn't make as much as I thought we did, but it was kind of fun to see the kids dress up, so. And the kids also do a Bike-A-Thon during the summer, so they have to get sponsorships for the Bike-A-Thon. This is something that they raise funds for, for the club.
You probably said it, and I might have missed it, Teresa.
That's okay.
But as far, do, how many employees do you have and how many volunteers?
I have two volunteers. We have right now eleven employees. There's only one full-time employee, and that's myself. Everybody else is part-time.
Okay.
To meet the standards of BGCA, we have to have at least four, two staff per our ratio of twenty kids. So we have four sets of eyes instead of two sets of eyes.
Sure. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I just want to thank you for what you, not only what you do for the community, but this year, it looks like you're asking for less than you did.
Yes, yeah.
Last year, which is very impressive considering the increase in price of food and other things.
Right.
And you feed these kids and take care of these kids, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Does anybody else? I would just echo what you just heard, you just talking to the kids, they love you, and they just love going there, and I appreciate you doing everything you do. The Hannah Boys and Girls Club was a real nice addition to that program, too. I think they needed it badly.
They did, they did. When we, we did an actually impact over there, we started last summer. The original plan was to be in Saratoga, but Saratoga did not have the room for Boys and Girls Club in their school district, so they decided to put us in Hannah, recognizing how they needed something over there, because technically there is nothing for those kids to do over there. And it's been a welcome blessing to them. It's slowly picking up. I mean, I targeted it having maybe just thirty kids total, but to see the increase slowly throughout since January is, is impressive. It's been a welcoming sight over there, so.
Well, and I think it's helping the rec center, too.
Yeah.
The town itself.
Right.
I think it was a nice win-win for.
It's a nice tie-in.
Both of you.
Yeah.
Yes. Anything else?
No.
Anybody have anything else? All right, well, thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda is the, if you're ready, the Carbon County Child Development Program. We're running a little bit ahead of schedule, but.
Perfect, right?
Is that working?
Yeah.
Okay.
Square shooters?
I know, isn't that fantastic?
Those are retro bags.
Back to us when.
Oh, boy.
It's retro bags.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Very awesome.
Thanks, Denise. Thank you.
You got weekend's in one. Oh, it's amazing. Thank you. Ready?
Yes.
Can you hear me good?
Yep, I can.
You know you can. Thank you, Mayor Wykum and City Council members for the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Mindy Munson-Green, and I'm the Executive Director for Carbon County Child Development Programs. And also presenting tonight is Denise Clark, and she's our Fiscal Officer for the program. Carbon County Child Development Programs is a Head Start program. We provide comprehensive services to qualifying children and families in Carbon County. We have been in Carbon County for fifty-eight years this year. A lot of people and agencies get us mixed up with Project Reach, so I wanted to bring that up tonight, because we are both preschools, we work in the same buildings, but we do very different things. And so I just wanted to make sure you know Carbon County Child Development Programs is Head Start, because that gets very mixed up. The funds we are requesting tonight will help supplement our food program. The food program we use to feed the children is CACFP, which is Child and Adult Food Program. And they get home-cooked, healthy, well-balanced meals. And you have an example of a snack that we gave you. So if you want to get in your bags, you can take a look at what a snack would look like. Did you give them the calendar? I also gave you a menu, the menu calendar for the month of April, so you can kind of see what it looks like for the whole month. For CACFP, we have to serve three components for breakfast, five components for lunch, and then two components for snack, which you have more than two in there, and sometimes we will do that. You have to have a whole grain every single day, and you have to have milk with every single meal that we provide. And if you noticed on the application that I submitted, it shows that milk is up thirty-three percent.
Yes.
And we still have to, no matter what, have that. So, for example, your snack that I gave you is a whole grain, a fruit, and a dairy. Your string cheese is really going to be your milk. So just, that's your milk for the night. Breakfast reimbursement is two-twenty-one. Lunch reimbursement is four dollars and three cents. Snack reimbursement's a dollar eighteen. So that's per kid for every meal that happens. We appreciate all your help through the years, and the city funds that we receive from you go to a very good cause and a very good service. The meals we provide to some of our students are the healthiest and most well-balanced meals they may get Monday through Thursday. And so we will provide snack packs for kids who, we might see things like they're hiding food in their backpacks from their lunch. So they might put their roll in their backpack, or they're panicky about their food. So we know those kids need some extra help, so we're going to sneak little packs, just like what you guys just got, in their backpacks, and we'll make sure over the weekend they have those. So some of the money that we get from you will also go to help provide that. And then we make sure families who are struggling with food also get services, referrals, or we can assist with food as well. So this is part of the program that we're very proud of, because nobody should be hungry. Nobody should. And as you know, food costs are ridiculous right now. So again, the funds that you allocate to us will go specifically for food. I have no problem telling you, that's exactly what it's going to go for. Are there any questions?
Are these matching funds? What we give you, do you, do, do they go into a matching fund account?
It just supplements what CACFP already gives us. So right now, I asked you for nine thousand, obviously it's going to be more than that, what we'll be short every month, so we'll have to fundraise or find the money some other way to fill in that gap.
Okay.
The Head Start budget is seven thousand dollars for the food line, and we anticipate forty-five thousand from CACFP this year, but that's still a shortfall.
Okay.
Do you have any fundraisers planned for this year?
So we do, Music in the Park is our biggest fundraiser, but we are going to try and do some different things to try to make more money than what Music in the Park was doing for us. So we're looking at other fundraisers like the Fair, and we always get asked to go downtown and do the Fiesta Days or whatever. What is it downtown? I can't remember what it is.
Summer Fest.
The Cowplop, Summer Fest, yeah. So we grill, that's how our, our money maker is. We grill the hamburgers and hot dogs for Music in the Park. And so we're going to try to do some different things this year, but yes, we do that. We also do a candy fundraiser at the school. So yes, we fundraise all year.
Okay.
Yes. We have to, we, in order to use the money for things that the Head Start money would not allow us to do.
Anybody else have any questions? I don't have any either. I do, I see out and about and at the Music in the Park and appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you.
It's all about the kids.
It is all about the kids, yes.
And make good hot dogs.
And make good hot dogs.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Honorable Mayor?
Yes.
Since we are running early, Cove is waiting for another person to come, but CCEDC is ready to present.
Okay, we'll, we'll skip over and come back. So Carbon County Economic Development.
See the kids dress up, so, and the kids also do a Bike-A-Thon during the summer. So they already have to get sponsorships for the Bike-A-Thon. This is something that they raise funds for, for the club.
You probably said it and I might have missed it, Teresa.
That's okay.
But, um, as far, do you, how many employees do you have and how many volunteers?
I have two volunteers. Uh, we have right now eleven employees. There's only one full-time employee and that's myself. Everybody else is part-time.
Okay.
To meet the standards of BGCA, we have to have at least, uh, four, two staff per our ratio of twenty kids. So we have four sets of eyes instead of two sets of eyes.
Sure. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I just, uh, wanna thank you for what you, not only what you do for the community, but, um, this year, it looks like you're asking for less than you did-
Yes, yeah.
-last year, which is very impressive considering the increase in price of food and other things.
Right.
And you feed these kids and take care of these kids and it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Does anybody else? I would just echo what you just heard. You just talking to the kids, they love you and they just love going there and I appreciate you doing everything, uh, you do. The Hannah Boys and Girls Club was a real nice addition to that program too. I think they needed it badly.
They did, they did. When we, we didn't actually impact over there, we started last summer. Uh, the original plan was to be in Saratoga, but Saratoga did not have the room for Boys and Girls Club in their school district. So they decided to put us in Hannah, um, recognizing how they needed something over there 'cause technically there is nothing for those kids to do over there. And it's been a welcome blessing to them. Um, it's slowly picking up. I mean, I targeted it having maybe just thirty kids total, but to see the increase slowly throughout since January is impressive. It's been a welcoming sight over there, so.
Well, and I think it's helping the rec center too.
Yeah.
The town itself.
Right.
I think it was a nice win-win for-
It's a nice tie-in.
Both of ya, yes. Anything else?
No.
Anybody have anything else? All right, well, thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda is the, uh, if you're ready, the Carbon County Child Development Program. We're running a little bit ahead of schedule, but-
Perfect, right? Is that working?
Yeah.
Okay.
Square shooters?
I know, isn't that fantastic?
Those are retro bags.
Oh, boy.
It's retro bags.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Very awesome.
Thanks Denise. Thank you.
It's amazing. Thank you. Ready?
Yes.
Can you hear me good?
Yep, I can.
You know you can. Thank you Mayor Wykum and City Council members for the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Mindy Munson-Green and I'm the Executive Director for Carbon County Child Development Programs. And also presenting tonight is Denise Clark and she's our Fiscal Officer for the program. Um, Carbon County Child Development Programs is a Head Start program. Uh, we provide comprehensive services to qualifying children and families, um, in Carbon County. We have been in Carbon County for fifty-eight years this year. A lot of people and agencies get us mixed, mixed up with Project Reach, so I wanted to bring that up tonight because we are both preschools, we work in the same buildings, um, but we do very different things. And so I just wanted to make sure you know Carbon County Child Development Programs is Head Start 'cause that gets very mixed up. Um, the funds we are requesting tonight, um, will help supplement our food program. The food program we use, uh, to feed the children is CACFP, which is Child and Adult Food Program. Um, and they get, um, home-cooked, um, healthy, well-balanced meals. Um, and you have an example of a snack that we gave you. So if you wanna get in your bags, you can take a look at what a snack would look like. I also gave you a, um, menu, the menu calendar for the month of April, so you can kinda see what it looks like for the whole month. For CACFP, we have to serve three components for breakfast, five components for lunch, and then two components for snack, which you have more than two in there, and sometimes we will do that. You have to have a whole grain every single day and you have to have milk with every single meal that we provide. And if you noticed on the application, um, that I submitted, it shows that milk is up thirty-three percent.
Yes.
And we still have to, no matter what, have that. Um, so, for example, your snack that I gave you is a, um, whole grain, a fruit and a dairy. Your string cheese is really gonna be your milk. So just, that's your milk for the night. Um, breakfast reimbursement is two-twenty-one, lunch reimbursement is four dollars and three cents, snack reimbursement's a dollar eighteen. So that's per kid for every meal that happens. Um, we appreciate all your help through the years, um, and the city funds that we receive from you, um, go to a very good cause and a very good service. Um, the meals we provide to some of our students are the, um, healthiest and most well-balanced meals they may get Monday through Thursday. And so, um, we will provide, um, snack packs for kids who, um, we might see things like they're hiding food in their backpacks from their lunch. So they might put their roll in their backpack or they're panicky about their food. So we know those kids need some extra help, so we're going to sneak little packs, just like what you guys just got, in their backpacks and we'll make sure over the weekend they have those. So some of the money that we get from you will also go to help provide that. Um, and then we make sure families who are struggling with food, um, also get services, um, referrals, or we can assist with food as well. Um, so this is part of the program that we're very proud of 'cause nobody should be hungry. Nobody should. And as you know, food costs are ridiculous right now, so, um, again, the funds that you allocate to us will go specifically for food. I have no problem telling you that's exactly what it's gonna go for. Are there any questions?
Are these matching funds? What we give you, do you, do, do they go into a matching fund account?
It just supplements what CACFP already gives us. So right now I asked you for nine thousand, obviously it's gonna be more than that, what we'll be short every month, so we'll have to fundraise or find the money some other way to fill in that gap.
Okay.
The Head Start budget is seven thousand dollars for the food line and we anticipate forty-five thousand from CACFP this year, but that's still a shortfall.
Do you have any fundraisers planned for this year?
So we do, Music in the Park is our biggest fundraiser, but, um, we are going to try and do some different things to try to make more money than what Music in the Park was doing for us. Um, so we're looking at other fundraisers like the fair and we always get asked to go downtown and do the Fiesta Days or whatever, what is it downtown? I can't remember what it is.
Summer Fest.
The Cowplop, Summer Fest, yeah. So, um, we grill, um, that's how our, our moneymaker is. We grill the hamburgers and hot dogs for Music in the Park. And so, um, we're gonna try to do some different things this year, but yes, we do that. We also do a candy fundraiser at the school. So yes, we fundraise all year. Yes. We have to, we, in order to use the money for things, um, that the Head Start money would not allow us to do.
Anybody else have any questions? I don't have any either. I do, I see out and about and at the Music in the Park and appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you.
It's, uh, all about the kids.
It is all about the kids, yes.
They make good hot dogs.
They make good hot dogs.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Honorable Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, since we are running early, Cove is waiting for another person to come, but, um, CCEDC is ready to present.
Okay, well, we'll skip over and come back. So, uh, Carbon County Economic Development. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Honorable Mayor, uh, City Council, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for taking the time to hear all these fine organizations come to you for financing and funding. My name's Copper France. I'm the President of the Carbon County Economic Development Corporation. Uh, to my left is Yvonne Johnson, who is our Executive Director. Um, and I just wanna touch just briefly on a few things since Yvonne's been with us. One of our main goals is to create some unity amongst all entities in Carbon County, all public entities and, and the communities. And wow, what an amazing job she has done. Her main job is not to, you know, certainly we all wanna see is economic development, is, is projects going up in our community. Um, and you, you'd think that's what's gonna measure our success. And while, yes, those projects, when those do go up, um, are measures of success, one of the things that, um, I think she does more often than, than what we notice in the community is she's providing resources for people who are trying to start businesses, who are trying to grow businesses. She's marrying them up with companies like Ayers to help them with, uh, business development plans and things of that nature that really, a lot of new business owners or, or startup organizations, they just don't know where to get that start. Um, there is a Small Business Development Group, but oftentimes they don't even know how to get to them. And so Yvonne's that liaison between these new businesses, um, that come into our communities. And I say communities because we do, um, provide, uh, economic development services to all of Carbon County, which, as you all know, is a very big county. And so she has put on many, many miles. And so, you know, the funding that we request are, are operating funds to help us to continue those efforts. I, for one, feel like that we have had more traction and got more done with economic development in the past two years since Yvonne's been here than we probably did for the ten before that. And so, you know, while we still don't have that home-run project that we can just hang our hat on and say, "Wow, that was a big one that we really had a lot of, of, uh, part of, or played a big part in," we have a lot of little wins, little businesses that she has helped to, uh, find a piece of land to purchase so that they can start up their business, or, um, just helping getting them, uh, you know, associated with financial institutions like ours, um, or, or RMB State Bank. Um, just getting them with the right people so that they can get their business up and off the ground. And, um, we can't disclose all of these projects because some of the projects are actually confidential because the people that we work with don't ask, or, or ask us not to disclose that. Um, but, you know, there's some that are very open and, and, uh, we partner with a lot of, uh, groups like, you know, take for instance, uh, the Wind Project, the Choke Cherry Project. I mean, how many times has Carbon County, the city, all of us went to bat for that project? You know, some of that takes time. Yvonne is doing a great job, she's built great relationships. Um, we had some fence-mending to do and I think Yvonne has done that and done it very well. Um, we certainly appreciate the support we've given in the past. We know everybody's budget's tight, um, and, um, the consideration that you give us for the funding that we're requesting, um, is, is certainly appreciated. Uh, our, our funding is gen, is typically generated from a couple sources. One is, um, from, uh, grants from organizations like the City of Rawlins, all the towns count, um, in Carbon County. We approach them, um, and we get support from most of them. We've got a couple that we're still working on that, you know, don't always support us as well as they should, in, in our opinion. Um, but we, we've gotta build that trust with them. We also have corporate, uh, donors that, uh, provides funding to Carbon County Economic Development. And then, um, lastly, um, we have funding that comes from a fundraiser. We didn't do, we did not have one last year, but we had a very successful one the year before. And so our intention will be to have another fundraiser this fall at our annual meeting to try and raise some more funds to help supplement this. Yvonne works pretty much on her own, she's her own secretary, uh, she, she's her own driver, she doesn't even have a driver. But she, she does put on a lot of miles in Carbon County and, um, you know, we are for Carbon County and we, we support everybody, including the City of Rawlins. And I think the City of Rawlins probably gets the most benefit out of this, just, you know, due to the fact that she's located here, we're the county seat. Um, but, uh, like I said before, we appreciate your, uh, funding and certainly would entertain any questions.
I don't have any questions, but I've watched, uh, your program grow and what's been done around the county and in our own town and whatnot, and, uh, Yvonne is definitely appreciated for what she does and, uh, the economic, it's, it's so, it's impossible to quantify the success for, or whatever of economic development, you don't know. But I do know one way to, uh, that you, there's one way to not win and that's quit. And, and the program you guys are running, it, it's, it's got, it's gotten traction and I see it all over the county, so I like it.
Thank you for that, we appreciate hearing that, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, well, thank you very much.
I just wanted to let you know, I messed, I messed up on the financial, the one that I turned in. So what I gave you, that is correct.
This one here, okay.
Please accept my apologies.
And our, our fiscal year, just as a point of clarification, our fiscal year ends June thirty. And so that's why it's, it's kinda hard to show, we're showing there's an actual year-to-date, but then, um, on the, uh, on the budget side, that's an annual budget. But on the, uh, fiscal year, it's, it's basically the, or the actual year, that's our actual expenses and revenues so far. You know, but we still have a few months to go before the end of this fiscal year, so.
Most of the ones we get say that right on 'em. They have that written in, six months, eight months.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, is, is, uh, Carbon County Cove ready? Everybody here? Okay, okay. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, my name is Jennifer Evans. Um, as most of you know, I'm the Executive Director of Carbon County Cove. Um, looks like I'm the only one representing Cove tonight, but, but that's okay, we'll just go through with it. Um, I just wanna begin my presentation, um, with a little snippet on Cove. Um, we are a nonprofit, um, domestic violence, sexual assault, pro, domestic violence, sexual assault and stalking program. Um, all of our services are free and confidential, so we provide a safe, confidential and, and free space for, um, for the, um, the people of Rawlins. Um, we, we deal with, um, domestic violence, sexual assault and stalking within, um, the city of Rawlins and throughout Carbon County. Uh, some of the essential services that we provide to individuals in need of our program include crisis intervention, advocacy and support, criminal justice support, safe house, financial assistance, and a multitude of other services. Um, most of our costly services, um, that we provide does include emergency financial assistance. And so what that looks like, that could be a range of providing victims, survivors with food, um, clothing, rental assistance, deposits, uh, relocation, and there's, there's a lot, um, legal fees. Um, so there's quite a bit of things that we do, fuel. Um, so all of the individuals that we serve have a different set of needs. Um, or, uh, a lot of times, a lot of those needs are all of it. Um, it could be, we could have one victim that could need legal services, that needs rental assistance, deposit assistance, food, clothing. So it's not uncommon for us to spend up to two thousand plus on one individual client alone. Um, so it can get, it can get quite costly. And so if I, if I may add, a vast majority, um, actually most of the individuals that we, um, assist, um, do reside within the city of Rawlins. Um, I know that it has been questionable before, um, about how we, how we operate as far as being a, a county program, but most of the individuals that we do, um, provide assistance for are within the city limits. And mainly that's just because there's more services here, jobs, um, accessibility to other service providers, um, families, support systems, schools and other amenities that, that outline communities may not have or be as accommodating to their immediate needs. Um, in satisfying those needs, we feel strongly that they will not only recover from their victimization and with a helping hand, that they will continue to thrive and work towards fulfilling a higher level of needs, including love, self-esteem, um, sustainability, to be able to pay their own expenses once we give them that, that helping hand, um, and self-actualization. Uh, Cove typically serves, um, an average of seventy to a hundred-plus, um, victims and survivors and their children, um, per year. To date, Carbon County Cove has served a hundred and nineteen individuals with approximately two months, um, remaining in our fiscal year. So with that being said, we are, um, asking for a little bit of a decrease, um, for this upcoming fiscal year, um, compared to what we were generously awarded, um, during the previous fiscal year. Um, because it's still not clear, um, with the federal and state funding, if, if we're gonna continue to see a decrease in the, the funding for domestic violence programs across the state, I think we'll know a little bit of more what that looks like at our, our state meeting next month, so hopefully there will be some increases. But if not, we just might not be able to, um, provide those services, um, the, the legal and the financial expenses that, that we, we tend to mostly get, um, with our, our victims. Um, and due to the increase of cost of living and inflation that we're seeing across the nation, um, groceries, rent, um, things like that, we're, we're kinda, um, that's why we're requesting a little bit more, um, this time, so that we can, um, assist with the sustainability and ability to continue providing those services, um, specifically for the emergency financial assistance. Um, we haven't got a whole lot, um, with our last budget, um, with the state and federal funding. We kinda had to, um, work around some, you know, operating expenses 'cause a lot of our operating expenses, um, went up as well. A small percentage would also be used for maintenance, repair and upkeep of, of our safe house. We operate the only safe house in Carbon County and there's quite a bit of upkeep. Um, we do, when we do house individuals in the safe house, they tend to, um, take things, they tend to take, um, the bedding, the pillow, I mean, they'll take pictures off the wall, so we kinda, we have to, to supplement that. And we get donations too, so we can supplement that with a lot of the donations we get, but you'd be surprised. Um, the funding request from the city would also allow us to uphold and to adhere to our mission of the services that we provide. Um, and this would in turn prevent us from having to turn, to turn people away because of lack of funding. And the, I say the people represent Cove, it's just me right now, but, um, we're always looking for a way to better assist, um, those in need and, and the healing process and their future growth. And we just look forward to making a difference with you on our side. And, um, on behalf of, of Cove and the board, um, we ask that you just consider our, the importance of our program and, um, the services that Cove provides. And thank you for taking your time to-
Can, can I ask you, uh, I mean, you provide services throughout the county.
Yes.
Have you approached some of the other cities about helping with funding?
Um, we have not. And I've talked to, um, some individuals with the county and that is for future Cove, but we just, we felt that it wasn't right right now to do that because we have not made a presence in the outlined committees. Um, that has been a goal of ours to get into the, the other, um, outline, line counties and get, make our presence known, but we just really didn't think it was the right thing to do by asking them for money if we haven't had our presence known right now, so. And a majority of the services that we do provide are, are within, in the city, so.
I, I understand, I just wondered.
Yeah.
Anya?
So if we have, if you have the only safe house in the county, um, I hope that at some point you ask the county for-
Yeah.
-funds, just because you're the only one. How many employees do you have?
Um, it's just me right now.
Okay, and the rest are volunteers?
Um, there's, no, I have no volunteers right now and it's just me. Um, yeah, I've, I've been by myself for a while, so me trying to, um, do everything by myself right now is, is quite a bit, which is another reason why we have not made our presence known in, in the outline 'cause it's just, I'm, I'm working everything on, on my end, so. The admin and, and the, the, um, direct services, so. Yeah, I, I actually, I, I got one volunteer yesterday, so we'll see how that goes. But I, I also, um, going back to what I was saying, um, about like, I, we do have the safe house, um, but we also do a lot of motels. Um, and, uh, the reason that we do, we, we spend a lot of money on motels actually, um, because a lot of times our shelter is full, um, if we can't house a male and a female at the same time. So if we have a male who needs assistance, we would motel them. Um, and a lot of times it can be a safety issue to, to, um, put him in our safe house just because we're in a very isolated location. And sometimes I feel when I make that decision that motel would probably be the safer route to take, um, until we can get a protection order or something like that in place. So a lot of our, our money does go towards motels, even though we do have a safe house. And even when we have them in the safe house, they could be in there up to a couple months, a couple weeks to a couple of months, depending on the waiting list for, um, for rentals and, and, um, housing, so. And we take care of the food and the costs for that as well, so.
This might be hard since you're the only employee, but do you have any plans for fundraising this year?
Yes, yes, we do. And we've, we've had, we have a lot of great fundraising ideas, um, and we have had some in the past. We just didn't really have a great turnout, um, with the fundraising efforts. But, um, we have a lot of really great ideas, um, ready to, to implement, so.
Any open positions do you have?
I have one right now as a direct services advocate.
Do you get to work a lot with the police?
Yes, yes, I work very closely, um, with the Sheriff's Office and, um, the Rawlins Police Department.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
We appreciate your service and hard work.
Thank you.
All right, the next, uh, the next group is the Carbon County Senior Services, if you're ready.
Thank you.
Don't be shy ladies.
I was just gonna say that, but, thank you.
Don't bite, honest.
Thank you. All right, whenever you're ready. I'm not rushing you, I'm just saying, whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the funding you have given to the Carbon County Senior Services. Um, we provide services to seniors sixty and above with, um- Um, we provide services to seniors sixty and above with, um, meals, socialization and transportation. Um, uh, our hot meals are served Monday through Friday at our senior centers, which are located in Bags Dixon, Encampment, Saratoga, Elk Mountain, Medicine Bow, Hannah and Rollins, with Rollins being the largest. And last year, um, we served six, sixty thousand four hundred and seventy-four year, sorry, seventy-four meals with twenty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-two served in Rollins alone. And our program, um, is all grant and, um, matching funds run. Um, we get funding from, um, the state and, um, federal monies. Um, we also get funding for our transportation program through YDOT. And, um, so we provide all of those, um, programs with, with the help of the funds that we, we, uh, get from those entities. Um, last year we, um, served eight hundred and forty-six seniors throughout the county. Uh, before COVID, our, our, uh, in, our meals have increased by about seven thousand in the last year. Uh, part of that is because, um, before COVID, our, um, home delivered meal program we had here in Rollins was two routes, one on north side and one on south side of, um, the railroad tracks. And this, uh, the last two years, we've had to increase that to three routes, um, averaging seventy-two meals a day. And that does go out to, um, Sinclair also, they are part of our delivery area. Um, let's see. What we're asking out the funds for is of course, like everyone else, the rising cost of food and the supplies that we use to, um, supply those meals, being our trays and our cups and all the things we deliver the meals in. Our, we have little bags, just like you have there, that we take the meals in. And, um, just the, you know, the rising cost of that. We do ask, um, our seniors, even though we don't force people to pay for their meals, we do ask for donations. This last year, we had to raise that by a dollar, um, for home delivered and, um, congregate meals. Uh, and then those people who like the convenience of taking their meal with them, which is an option, uh, we raised those meals by two dollars because we figure if somebody wants the convenience of, of taking those meals and that, and there is extra expense in them, that's why we, we did, decided to do that. Um, did, I'm sorry, this is, I am very new at this. This is my second month as executive director. Did I tell you my name?
You don't know.
I'm sorry. I jumped right into this and yes, um, I just became the director two months ago and my name is Kelly Morell. I, I have been with the program for, uh, almost six years, uh, coming up in June. So I do know a lot about the program, but in this particular position, I'm brand new at it. And so this is my first time doing, doing something like this, so I'm sorry about that.
You're, you're just asking a statisia.
So, um, with that being said, is there any questions on our program and what we do for the community?
What fundraisers do you do throughout the year?
We just finished a fundraiser today. We had a, um, some businesses in the community donated a full processed pig to us and a full processed lamb to us, and we sold tickets for that and we had the drawing today. Um, so we do that. Um, we don't, you know, obviously we can't guarantee that we get a, a fair animal donated to us, but, um, that's something that we, that our board has decided, uh, to do, you know, to raise extra money. We do our big fundraiser at the Jeffrey Center in September. That is with our au, our silent auction and our dinner. And we also do an online auction. We fundraise at the Music in the Park with the fifty-fifty raffle and.
What else ladies?
These are some of our seniors who participate in our programs.
Cinnamon rolls.
We do fifty-fifty on the birthday dinner.
Yes, we do fifty-fifty raffle at the, at the birthday dinner and we also do cinnamon rolls. So if you've ever had one of these ladies cinnamon rolls, you know what I'm talking about.
We have done pictures.
And we have our bazaar, our bazaar in Septem, or in October. So we do a lot of fundraising, cause it takes a lot of money to provide our services to over eight hundred people in the community.
And, and most important, we, we get to have fresh popcorn every day.
I would agree, that's important.
And those funds are donated also. Our seniors do, you know, participate in donating, donating a lot of things to our programs and we couldn't, we couldn't have our programs without our volunteers and all of these ladies sitting here with me today, volunteer at our center, either answering the phones or serving meals to those people who, um, can't get their own meal, um, just whatever, washing dishes, it's just whatever it takes for us to come together and, and, and make sure that, um, you know, the, that the most vulnerable people in our community are being served.
I, I know I don't look like I'm old enough to be in the seniors. I've actually eaten there quite a few times and, and I gotta tell you, the meals are amazing. Uh, it's fun to go there, the fellowship, getting a visit with other people and whatnot. It's a very positive experience and, uh, it is a, a really, uh, important service. Uh, my mother lived in Torrington and, uh, she would never go and one year for Christmas, she said, what do you want for Christmas? And I knew she didn't have any money, so I said a Corvette. But I would settle for, if you would go to the senior center and have lunch with Aunt Loretta. And she said, I don't wanna go up there and, anyway, she called and told me, well, I hope you enjoyed your Christmas present. And I said, oh, you went to eat with Aunt Loretta, huh? And she said, yes. And, and I said, did you have fun? She goes, yeah, and tomorrow, and the next day we're gonna, anyway.
You just have to get them in the door.
You know, and she would set home by herself if she
Yes.
wasn't doing that and very positive and, and, and I saw it personally, you know?
Yes.
And.
It keeps a lot of our seniors from being isolated.
Yes.
As much as possible, even the ones who are homebound get a little bit of human contact when our drivers deliver their meals to them and they, they create special bonds.
Oh, yeah.
So it's a very good, a very.
And some of these folks wouldn't eat or wouldn't eat right if you can't cook for one person, I mean, or whatever. Debbie and I even run in two people, what are you gonna? So it's, it is, it is a fulfilling, a really important need and.
I second that.
And each of our meals is, um, is approved by a dietitian. So they are balanced meals that go out to, um, to our seniors, whether they're in-house or, or homebound meals. And if there's folks that need meals on the weekends, we provide an extra two meals on Fridays because we are not open on Friday, but we do do a breakfast once a month. And so people can come in and have breakfast also.
I'd like to bring up the amazing thing we have is at Christmas time, we have, uh, trees with tags on them. And every one of these delivered meals, they get a Christmas present and it's not little, believe you me. We have a lot of people donating, a lot of people recruit. It's really a very, very special program and I'm very proud of it. Not to mention that through the year, sometimes they have treats for Valentine's Day, sometimes maybe Easter, but things come and go and there's surprises along the line for them.
Yes, we have May Day coming up, so we give them a little May Day basket full of candy and treats.
And we do cleanup too.
Oh, yes, the city cleanup, yes.
We get to pick up your trash.
So is there any other questions?
No, just thank you again.
Thank you.
We thank you from the bottom of our stomachs, cause we're very happy.
We've heard so much about food tonight, I'm starving. I might have to eat a snack. All right, I guess we're gonna take a, a little break here for a while.
Take your dash.
Yeah, my mom, she did not wanna go, boy. Then my sisters called me and they're like, how did you talk her into that? I said, well, it was either that or a Corvette, come on.
She wasn't, she wasn't gonna buy the Corvette.
My mom was my store the one in Dixon for years. She's really been a dirty bitch.
I worked in a nursing home for the first two years of being an orderly and I just got where I couldn't do it. It was kinda like working a pet partner, so I just, my heart couldn't take it. I, I go out to the dog pound and I take every one of them home and I just, I can't, you know, and.
Well, you could, your yard's big enough.
Well, I keep, so is my wife though. She's a, she's got a fantastic set of brakes. They had a, a pit bull. And it was just like my niece's pit bull, it was white haired with the pink skin and just the most loving dog you've ever seen. And, oh man, I'd walk in the shelter and hear that dog, it'd come right to me and I told Debbie, I wanna bring that dog over, but I didn't know how to get along with Cujo. We had another Chihuahua named Cujo at the time, now we got Diego, but.
And he's vicious.
He sure thinks he is, don't he? When you come in, he'll let you come in the house, he won't say a word.
If it's there, I'll hurt him saying no.
He will raise
Calling my cheesesteak.
I've never figured that out.
That's the honest thing, they're marking you until you leave.
Yeah.
Like he's telling you, you need to be gone.
Yeah, something.
You're out of your path.
Yeah. My daughter sent me a picture of the Chihuahua with a gun belt and a gun and, and she goes, this is how your dog sees himself when the doorbell rings. And he does. Pound for pound, he's an animal, boy. Yeah, well, he's fifteen pound Chihuahua, supposed to be ten. He gained a half a pound since the last time we put him on the diet and it isn't working. Man, this summer, he'll send him down low, cause he'll be out chasing cats.
I got a six pound Yorkie I carry.
Six pound Yorkie? That's pretty heavy for a Yorkie, isn't it? I had a Chihuahua that got stomped by the deer, Cujo, he was a little brown, little skinny thing and he was, uh, he was the funnest dog ever. And then when he got killed, I said, no more, I never wanna feel like this again in my whole life. And then this lady wanted to sell us Diego for four hundred dollars. And then pretty soon his three, and two, and pretty soon Debbie brings him home and she's like, I said, what did you do? Cause she knew how I, you know? Anyway, she said, well, she gave us the dog. So, anyway, our Canada dog went one of the female out of the litter. And, uh, it just died this last summer, but, um, they're eleven years old and Diego's still going for a tubo. I mean, he's a sumo wrestler, I'm telling you.
Yeah, my Yorkie's ten. They are personal dogs.
Oh, yeah.
It's five times your size.
The Cujo, when we had him, the neighbor had a German shepherd and he was riding his bicycle down the street and the German shepherd was riding with him while Cujo took off after the bike. And I'm thinking, well, that's the end of that dog, you know? And that German shepherd ran over and Cujo bit him on the lips and you could hear that dog squill and run home. And my little Chihuahua was like, is she that dad? And I'm like, are you crazy? What are you gonna do? Then this little black one, he, uh, got in a fight with a neighbor lady had forty cats and when she left, she just turned loose. And so it was, it was a siege there for a while, but Diego got beat up by a cat one night, boy, I could hear it and I went running out to save him and so the rest, I looked him all over and he
Put the cat killer?
No, he didn't, uh, he didn't even have any cuts on him, I think, just just the big cat beating him up, you know? So that whole night he would sit there with his back and he'd look at you and then look away as if like, I can't believe a cat beat me up, you know?
I'm embarrassed right now.
Yeah. Yeah, he's a but both of my dogs usually, if they bark, you should, you need to go look. You know, a lot of people have Chihuahuas that just bark, bark, bark. Ours never did that, cause we didn't let them. And if he, if they're raising cadenum, kinda need to go look. And that day that deer got him, he just went out the back door and around this little thing, flower bed, or actually was a sandbox back in the day when the community center was, that's what our house was, but, um, went around that corner and bam, got it. And what worried me was Connor, my grandson crawled around that same corner a couple times the week before, you know, and so.
Yeah, that's pretty scary.
Yeah.
What scared me was the deer period, it's, they're afraid of the deer, they're not afraid of people.
Well, you remember that gal that she had the job you have at City Market, that Jamie, I think her name was? She went out and chased her around the car about three times, up on the steps, was kicking at her and she couldn't get her keys out and whatnot, and was kicking her and her son opened the door and the mom and the deer both come in. And, yeah, I guess it was quite a riot there for a minute and, uh.
Linda had one come in and push it one time. Yeah, she had the back patio open and it's right in.
Noisy, they're noisy.
It's like that commercial where that bear is like, do you mind if I rip through your Well, and the thing is, they, like I said before, when they first came, they're afraid of you. And now that's, that's where they were born, that's their yard.
As you say, they've, they've got plenty more where I watch people walk and beat them. They really bark, move their hands, their feet. But one of these days they're gonna be found there and it's gonna be difficult.
Or they're gonna have a pocket full of food and can't get it out past now.
Yeah. I, I went out in my yard and one day there were two does and two fawns. My dogs went out, my last dog went out there barking at a few souls, couldn't hardly walk across the yard. Went across the barking out, one doe took the two fawns and took off. The other doe turned around and headed toward my dog. And I stepped in, flamed him and I didn't think she was gonna stop there. And, uh, yeah, I
When that one was stomping my dog, I ran out and I was gonna bulldog it, you know? I, I, I don't mind if I would, if I'd have been hurt, but that's
Well, for a minute.
It would have been, probably would have made ten grand on World's Funniest Video. Yeah, as I went out, it kicked, it kicked me and, and it ran out the gate at an ankle and I, I was crazy enough, I, after you see that, I mean, my dog, I, I like my dog better than most family members, he never borrows money, he hasn't ever wrecked a car. He never complains. Yeah, it, it was, yeah, that was horrible. And then, and I had one more gate to put up and then my fence would have been done and I felt guilty about that for a long time.
I watched your dog for six years.
Then the neighbor had a dog that, Kenny, my neighbor, Kenny's laying under a car, working on his car. And I hear him screaming, but I look over, well, this dog's like, smack, 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 right in his face. And he had his hands where he couldn't really defend himself. So then about two weeks later, I look over and here's a doe staring at that deer and her ears are down. I told Debbie, of all the dogs in the world, I gotta go save that thing, cause it's tried to bite me a couple of times now. So then I'm over there and the deer's chasing me around the car and the lady comes out and she's hollering at me, what are you doing to my dog? I'm like, I'm saving his life and I told her, you can't, you can't put a dog on a six foot chain and not look out the door, you know? And, yeah, we've had a half a dozen of them in our neighborhood stomped. I think mine's the only one that got killed, but. I know a Valera, when it was the Valera lady, they pull up and they let the dog out of the car and immediately got stomped and I mean, that, how's that for? An impression of a town, you know?
We'll come back to Rollins next week.
Venice and anybody?
It just scared me that we got a chance to get a little kid out in the yard and look at the one thinking it's cute and all the things, it was, they're, they're bitter like bracers.
Remember Jason Bjork, I, I remember laughing just because he's quite the storyteller, but he ran out and got his dog match and then. He chased him around the house about three times and I can't, I, I was laughing, I thought it was funny, about a week later, I find myself doing the same thing, running around my car out front thinking. What am I gonna do here?
It's not so funny, yeah.
So I had to tell him. It's sure funny when it happens to you, but. So, yeah, that was. Twins, we had two, two does that hung around in our neighborhood that had triplets. And they're cute when they're small, but. When I worked at Rollins Auto, we went to work one day and. Thought, what is that? And I walked over because I, I, I didn't know what it was, it was a baby deer and, uh, really cute because. We look up and the mom is standing there staring at us like, okay, time to go to work. By any animal, pigs, we raised pigs and cows. My brother-in-law told me he sat on the running board and grabbed that calf and milked that cow and had mistitis. So I'm on the ground laughing, that cow's doing that with a beard on his head, so then my brother walked up. All right, well, let's see who's next, we're a little early, I think, but, well, we're quite a bit early, actually. Oh, are you? All right, well, since you're here, we'll go ahead and, and, uh, speed you up a little bit, High Country Behavioral Health, correct?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thanks for having me, Mayor, Council. Hi, my name is Sam and I'm here on behalf of High Country Behavioral Health, also known, previously known as Carbon County Counseling Center. Uh, we provide therapy for mental health, substance abuse, family parenting, trauma, couples counseling, play therapy, grief groups. In addition to therapy, we also provide, uh, mental health and medication assisted treatment, um, available via telehealth, um, at our facility. We have, uh, provide housing support, um, for individuals who are in need of housing assistance or transitional living, we do have a transitional living facility here in town also. Uh, we currently, uh, provide services for two hundred and sixty-five clients, um, currently in the Rollins and Carbon County area. We are requesting, um, again, same as last year, uh, ten thousand, um, this helps offset the costs of individuals who. Are uninsured or experiencing financial hardships, um, we don't want there to be any barriers to treatment, so whether it's helping with, um. Services they need by us or medications, um, any type of financial assistance we can help with, we do. Regardless of the client's income or ability to pay for services, um, fully. We provide, uh, our housing support, uh, consists of daily living skills, mental health and substance abuse needs, medical case management. We provide social groups, a little bit of everything, honestly. I guess, uh, we provide, we have a crisis line too, so whether our office is open or not, we do have crisis services, a clinician on call twenty-four seven. Which is very beneficial, um, used a lot. Our clinicians are constantly, um, attending trainings in the community, whether it's, uh, youth mental health first aid, suicide prevention. Um, one of our clinicians recently attended a training for the trainer and she's going to, uh, start training for, uh. Youth mental health first aid in the community, so that's gonna be a big thing also. Any other questions, comments?
Do you, how, how many, uh, professionals, uh, providers participate in your program?
Um, so in Rollins, um, because we have facilities kind of all over Wyoming, but, um, in Rollins, we currently have, um, nine employees. Two are just front office, um, kind of support, administer report, support, the, we have. Seven, uh, providers, mental health techs in Rollins, but we utilize, um, our telehealth services a lot, so. If somebody doesn't have transportation, um, the weather's bad, roads are closed, whatnot, we do provide telehealth services, which has become really big lately.
Do, 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 are you the folks that operate the group home?
Yes.
Okay. And is that full at the moment or?
It is full, um, it's, usually stays full, so the minute we, um, individual is ready to transition out, we usually have a waitlist and we get somebody else right in there. So it's constantly, um, always full, we have four apartments in that group home.
And, and so four individuals?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? We certainly appreciate the services you provide and.
Thank you.
I'm pretty familiar with what goes on there and, and we're really glad you have that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Honorable Mayor, we do have the airport board is ready to present.
Okay.
They have all, Mr. Engleston is here and ready to go.
All right, we'll. Hopefully I won't get too confused here, I think we're good.
Good evening.
Hi, whenever you're ready.
Uh, my name's J.R. Engleston, I'm here representing the Rollins Carbon County Airport Board. We, uh. Provide maintenance and oversight for the, uh, airport and, uh. We, uh, I guess that's about, it's about our scope, right, we, uh, we have several, we have a couple of projects, uh, going right now, we're rebuilding the. Terminal and, uh, acquiring some mowing equipment for the airport. Uh, we have, uh, currently have four board members. All volunteer and then we have one part-time paid, uh, manager slash maintenance man for the airport.
It, the airport, it, uh, is it leased out to the, uh, flight company or what, what's the relationship there? I, between the airport board and that company?
The airport board owns the land that their building is on, so they, they lease the land that their hangar is on. And then they, uh, they own the fuel tanks and, and, uh, provide fueling services.
And, and they run the FBO there or whatever it's called?
Correct.
So the gentleman that works out there fueling the airplanes and stuff doesn't work for the airport board, it works for Classic Air, is that correct or?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Uh, we'll go with Vice Mayor Sanger to.
Where, where, I've read the revenues on the top, where do the revenues come from? What's generating them?
The only revenue streams we have right now are a small percentage of the fuel sales from classic aviation. Amounting to an average of about two hundred and fifty dollars a month. We do get some state, uh, fuel tax revenue as well, based on the number of gallons sold. And that's about a hundred and fifty dollars every quarter and we have, um. We have hangar leases, so they, most of the hangars that you see out there are privately owned hangars. Airport board owns the land, we lease the land to the, to those building owners, if you will. Uh, we have five hangars that the airport board owns, uh, that are available for rent, I believe three of them are occupied right now. But, uh, the majority of the, all the funding for the major projects is either state or federal funding through the FAA or YDOT. Usually a combination.
Is that grants, are they grants?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we. Late, uh, early last year, we completed the runway resurfacing for two-two-zero-four, the main long runway. That was a five million dollar project, um.
FAA money?
FAA and YDOT, um, so it turns out that we only had to come up with four percent of that amount locally to do that, but. Anyway, we do have, we do have some reserves, uh, asking for this funding to. Basically maintain our reserves, um, uh, to basically pay our employee and the fuel and supplies he needs to maintain the airport.
Do you use the reserves for matching your funds, if you have to?
Yes, sir.
Do you see any big projects coming up this next year? And I know sometimes FAA surprises you with, here's, here's some money if you can come up with a match, but is there anything planned in the master plan this year that you know of?
Yes, we are, uh, we've actually just, we're doing bid evaluation to, uh. Enhance the old terminal building, uh, it's probably more familiar to everybody here where the BLM, uh, does their fire suppression activities in the summer out of. Uh, that's actually the old terminal building, we are expanding it and creating a pilot's rest area, pilot lounge. A computer for flight planning, that type of thing, outside of the FBO, in case they don't want to go there for some reason.
Most of the old hangars are down, correct? There, there was a bunch of old hangars, a whole string of them, I, that.
I believe we did.
First row, I think, and it, I think they all got torn down, didn't they?
I believe so, I, I've only been with the airport board since twenty nineteen. I believe we did tear down some hangars and, um. Moved others when we constructed the T-hangers that the airport board owns and rents out.
Any questions of this gentleman?
So if you are taking out of reserves to help match for grants, um, at what point do you no longer have reserves?
Depending on the scope of the projects, right, at, at current rates, we are dropping reserves at about forty thousand dollars a year, giving us. Four years if we have a big project every year. Now, our master plan, we don't have any other large scale projects until twenty twenty-seven, I believe. But, uh, let's see, we'll be resurfacing the runway or resurf, seal coat maintenance on the pavement will happen in twenty-five, that's a. I think our portion of that is about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. But, uh, yeah, we, we have some reserves, but, uh, that's. The fuel costs and, and labor costs, especially this winter to keep the airport functioning was, uh, a little over forty thousand. And that, you know, of course eats into our reserve without additional funding.
And when it's no removal, it's, you don't have much left to show for it is the problem.
Yeah, no, uh, our manager, Bob, is, did a great job this winter. There was a couple of timesheets where he worked a hundred hours a week trying to keep it clear.
Yeah, Bob's a hard worker. Well, um, any other questions? Well, thank you for what you do and we certainly, uh, appreciate having the airport board in the airport.
Well, thank you for your time.
Mm-hmm, thank you. All right, that partner's here?
Yes. Yes, they're here.
Okay.
No, we're not gonna kick you in the cradle. Good evening. I'm Margaret Quintero and I'm the president for Pet Partners and I have three other board members, we have a board of eight. So I have Tony Lamb, who's the vice president, and Joey Marandino, who's the TNR director, and Casey Belford's our treasurer on our board. Pet Partners, we TNR cats, feral cats in the whole county of Carbon. We have done two hundred and fifty-four cats during twenty twenty-two, which was fifty-two cats, more than we did in twenty twenty-one. We also have, um, a coupon program for the community for people that need financial assistance to help spay, neuter their dogs or cats. We pay the vet a portion to, to help encourage people to get their dogs and cats spayed and neutered to help with the overpopulation. So, um, with inflation, everything's increasing, so that's why we are asking for additional money next year. Because we've also partnered with the Bags Vet Clinic as well. Um, they're honoring our coupons so people don't have to travel, you know, they can adopt from us and they don't have to travel back to Rollins to have their animals spayed or neutered, so we'll pay them. We also partner with the shelter, the shelter is, we've taken four cats from the shelter already this year that has either, one has had some medical issues and they asked us to take it, that they didn't have. The budget to care for it, so we had the surgery and had the teeth pulled and she's ready to be adopted now, she's a senior cat, but. And then we've taken three that were deemed feral, that will spay and neuter and we've placed some with ranches and barns, so we have partnered with them. We took one last summer that was caught in the fence and, um. We took it to rehab it and we ended up having to have his leg amputated, but he's ready for adoption now too. He's got a really sweet personality, we don't know much history behind him, other than a realtor found him caught in the fence and he chewed his toes off to try to free himself from the fence, so. We have some pretty horrific stories with some of these cats, but we do everything that we can to try to place them and get them off the street. And for every cat that we get off the street, in one year, that one cat can produce twelve kittens, a possible of twelve kittens, and then it just. Multiplies every year that we don't get those cats off the street or get them spayed and neutered, they don't necessarily have to get off the street because some of them are too feral to. Place anywhere else and because they multiply so fast, you just can't take them all off the street. But if we get them spayed and neutered, you're controlling the overpopulation that people have. And last year I solicited quite a few of our community members that called and said, we have these cats, we need to get off the street. The whole board, we work full time, so we can't just sit on traps and, so I had quite a few people. And so I had quite a few people work with me that I would give them traps. They would call me and say they have one trapped. I'd come and get it. And we could increase our numbers by having the community play part in helping us trap these cats and getting them back and getting them vaccinated. So you're helping with any diseases that they may carry, getting them well.
So Pet Partners, pretty much, it's changed a little bit. I used to be involved way back then, but it might, it's changed a little bit. You're most, mostly centered on cats now?
Yes, we, we have a facility that's out on Cherokee Road, and it's not a big facility. We can only house between ten and fifteen cats. So last year, we had also four fosters that would take some of our kittens or our cats that needed socialized and take them in their home and get them used to that. But we don't have a facility that can hold dogs. It's not like a shelter. It's, it's, we have cages and stuff, and we put the cats in, but we don't have a facility for dogs. But we do help the community if they need financial help to spay or neuter their dogs.
Yep, okay. Well, it's just changed quite a bit.
I've only been with them for about three years, so I don't know what they did before.
Yeah, well, and it's, it's changed through the years, is, you know, kind of a dynamic thing. But it's, uh, you know, I used to work with them quite a bit, try to help them raise money and whatnot, but I could not work at the facility because then I'd be a dog hoarder, you know? I couldn't do it, but, um...
Well, I picked up, I picked up a cat from the shelter yesterday, and they said that she was kind of semi-feral, so I had her, and I was getting ready to put her in the, the crate and didn't get the door shut, so we had a semi-feral loose cat in there, and they chased it out, and I grabbed it. She goes, how did you do that? You just have to have reflexes. When you see them, you grab them, and you don't let go. It's like, you just, or they're gonna get away.
Yeah.
So.
What fundraisers do you guys have planned for this year?
Well, on our Facebook page, every Friday, we, um, highlight a cat, and we get Facebook donations. Some, it, it depends on the story on the cat. With one that we call Littlefoot, that we had to, we raised over seven hundred dollars to help with his vet bills for Littlefoot. And then we had another one, we call Burgers, who's had a really bad sinus infection, and we've raised quite a bit of money for him as well. Um, we've gotten some donations from, I believe it's the, um, it's a place out of Denver that they sent us twenty-five hundred dollars that said it's just specifically for Carbon County Vet Clinic vet bills. So some of them designate what we can spend the money on. And then when we were low on food, we put it out there that we have a wish list on Chewy, and we, we were down to one bag of adult food. Last week, we put it there by, we did it on Monday. By Friday, our shed was full, stopped, fully stocked again, because in the winter, we don't have that many cats, but now they're having kittens and they're all over the place, springtime. Yes, um, Rollins in Motion does a fundraiser for us every year at Easter, Egg My Yard, so she gives us the proceeds of that. We get money from the donations, and we constantly get community donations that they send in. We helped a ranch in the fall. They had forty cats. In Saratoga, they don't have a shelter, so many of the people, when they're forced to surrender their cats or they can't, they dump them at ranches. So we had a ranch call us, and we helped, and we did over thirty of their cats that they could catch, and they brought in. And we adopted quite a few of the kittens, but they were, there was some that were really sick because they're just in close proximity and sharing their infections and...
Well, I'd rather have feral cats than rats. You need some feral cats in your town.
You do need some, but we do need to control the population because they just...
They do multiply fast.
Yes.
And since you're doing work in the county, you don't ask the county for any money?
I did speak to a county commissioner, so I am checking into that. Um, this is my second year on the board, so I'm looking into that. And I did call the clerk today because I just found out that they have budget for that, too. And I'm gonna start checking with the other cities, too, because we do do a lot for the other cities, but a lot of the ranches donate to the cause because we're helping them as well.
Any other questions or whatever?
They adopt kittens.
I'm not a cat man. We had, one of our neighbors had like forty cats, and she moved and the cats didn't, and just got turned loose, and so it was mayhem for a while. And, um, and I appreciate y'all helping with that because most of those cats have been caught and done something else with. But the upside was, my little fat Chihuahua lost a little weight chasing them, but it was, it was overwhelming for a while. I mean, they were everywhere. And, uh, yeah, and I just knew there's gonna be double that many a year from now, and anyway, that got cleaned up, and I do appreciate it.
There's a street right behind my house that last summer is all I did was see cats running back and forth across the street. So this winter, they started showing up on my back porch, so I've fed them. Over the last two weeks, I've caught five and got them fixed. So I'm like, you just sprayed my caddio, you're going to the vet. So I've got five of them fixed, and I have plans, but we just found out yesterday that they're down to one vet right now, so the appointments that we're gonna be able to get are gonna slow down. So I'm only gonna trap at least at my location when I know I can get them in, because we don't have room to house that many there. And I do have somebody over what they used to call Cottonwood Village. What is it now? I'm not sure what they call it now.
My house.
Oh, she's gonna start trapping over there again.
Yeah, there's, there's, it's not like it was, but I think a lot of people go down the Crowls and dump off cats. And, and, uh, they don't stay there. They come up through the housing, you know, and when that one lady, she lived like five houses down, honestly, forty cats.
I've been in her house. She went to a nursing home.
Yeah.
But she called me into her house to help her before she went to the nursing home, and honestly, that house should be condemned and flattened.
I, yes. But anyway, we had all those crazy cats, and I mean, and they weren't tame. You know, like a lot of cats, they'll, come here, you know, and you can coax them over to you, and these cats, no way. I mean, they were, they were just flat wild and, and, yeah, my neighbors was, I was afraid my neighbors were gonna start shooting at them, there were so many of them.
Well, we do know that some people don't understand that domestic cats don't do well if you just, I've gotta move and I can't take these cats, so they just let them out. They don't do well. We picked one up that was supposedly only out for three weeks. He had lost probably five pounds, had frost beat, frostbite on two of his feet, his ears and his tail. The vet said that may have to amputate part of his tail. But we put him out there. We knew he was too friendly to not be somebody's cat, and somebody had been missing him, so they, the very next day came and got him. But we had already taken him to the vet and got him care because we knew he wasn't in good shape.
Yeah, they, if they're not born wild and whatnot, they don't, they can't adapt. It's like any other animal.
Well, they just don't understand that once they're domesticated, they just don't, they don't do well.
They're not good hunters.
Well, they can hunt, but they're not used to having to hunt for their food in that, in the same way that a feral cat does.
Probably picky eaters.
Kinda like sending your kid to college, you know? They come back a little skinnier.
Don't just go to the fridge anymore.
Yeah.
I have both my cats from Pet Partners.
Well, thank you.
And if you know Joey, you have to have a cat, so it's kinda part of the friendship.
Your mom is getting one, did she tell you? Yes.
So thank you for what you do. It's greatly appreciated.
Well, we, we even took three really super feral ones from the shelter last, last summer and put them in a foster home, and they're in three loving homes now. They're very affectionate cat. Even one of our board members adopted one of them. I mean, the most feral one. She was loose in my house for two weeks. I couldn't find her. She got out, and I was like, we're doing flooring. I don't have time to look for her. But then I got her in a different foster home that really worked with her and got her socialized, so.
He didn't find her because there was a lump in the rug, you know?
They were in her vent. She called me hysterical. They're in the vents under the house. I'm like, they'll be all right. Well, the air conditioner's on, they'll be fine.
My husband thought he killed them because the air was on, and he's doing flooring in the back, and I accidentally left the cage open, and they were in the vent, but it all worked out. There's some stress with this stuff, let me tell you.
That's why I'm a dog guy.
There is some stress with it sometimes.
All righty, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Let's see. All right, do we have the folks here from Project Reach Early Intervention? All right.
One, one person.
All right. Whenever you're ready.
My name's Nicole Matavia, and I'm the Program Director at Project Reach Early Intervention Preschool, um, here in Rollins. And, um, our preschool is a little, little unique in that we provide special education services to children, um, birth up through age three. So we provide services, um, by physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, and special education teachers to children, not only at our center, but other preschool programs in town and daycares in town. And then, um, for the children under three, we serve them in their homes.
How many employees are there?
So right now, at my center, I have about ten employees. We do contract teletherapy services, um, for speech-language pathologists, just because they're hard to recruit to Rollins. We contract our physical therapist with Fremont Clinic, and, um, I'm looking for an occupational therapist currently, so, um, most of our big therapists, we have to do teletherapy services, um, outside of our center. But we do have classroom teachers and a special education teacher onsite, so that is, that is nice.
How many children do you normally have there?
So at my center, we serve about forty-five kids.
Wow.
The majority of those kids do receive special education services from us. Um, there's probably about ten kids that are considered typically developing that just attend our preschool center. And then, um, we serve about twenty to twenty-five kids in other preschool daycare settings in Rollins. And then we serve about twenty, um, children under the age of three. And all of our services are free of charge to, to families.
My ex-brother-in-law used to be a regional director for Project Reach, and, uh, so I'm pretty familiar with the program, and it, uh, it, it really helps a lot of children get noticed earlier, I guess, their shortcomings or their, the problem areas, so they can get corrected faster. It's a great program.
Yeah, our belief is if we catch them earlier, then hopefully when they enter into the public school, they're not as far as behind, or they don't need services anymore.
Right. Anybody have any questions?
Do you have fundraisers planned for this year?
Um, so we just completed a fundraiser. We typically do it every year. We sell popcorn through, um, a company called Popcornopolis, and so, um, we usually do that fundraiser every year, and then we have one in the fall, um, just like catalog sales that we do in the fall.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
No problem.
All right, do we have, uh, the old Frontier Prison Board? I was gonna say, do we have any prisoners in the house?
Hi. Hi, Mayor and City Council members. We are the Wyoming Frontier Prison Staff and the Old Penn Joint Powers Board. I'm Tina Hill. I'm the Historic Site Director. Right next to me, I have Galen Hyatt. He's my bookkeeper, office manager. And next to him, we have Anita Mayberry. And then next to me, we have Keith Miles, Amanda Moore, Cherry Schillinger. They're my board members. Wyoming Frontier Prison, formerly the Wyoming State Penitentiary, is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and operates as a tourism destination in Rollins, Wyoming. Since nineteen ninety-one, the Old Penn has been operated by the Old Penn Joint Powers Board. The mission of the Old Penn Joint Powers Board is to preserve and operate the Wyoming Frontier Prison Historic Site for the community through its historic significance, tourism, education, and recreational opportunities for the visitors and residents of Rollins and Carbon County. In a recent study provided by the American Alliance of Museums, eighty-nine percent of Americans, regardless of political persuasion, believe that museums provide important economic impacts back to their communities. Museums in the United States contribute nearly fifty billion dollars annually to the nation's economy. In Wyoming, the total financial impact that museums have on our economy is a hundred and eighty-nine million dollars, with three, thirty-six point seven million in federal taxes and seventeen point three million in state and local taxes. In twenty twenty-two, the Wyoming Frontier Prison visitors contributed approximately eight hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars to our local economy. According to the Carbon County Visitors Council research, day travelers spend about fifty dollars a day, while overnight spent, visitors spend a hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents a day. In twenty twenty-two, the Wyoming Frontier Prison had twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-six visitors. Nine thousand, six hundred and two of our visitors came from outside Carbon County. Four hundred and forty-four of our visitors came from Carbon County. Twenty-five percent of our visitors spent the night in a Carbon County lodging facility. The Wyoming Frontier Prison educates, informs, and entertains thousands of visitors and locals every year and is a strong economic driver for our community. Tours, daily operations, and our special events went well in twenty twenty-two. As I said, we had twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-six visitors in two, twenty twenty-two, which is a slight decrease from twenty twenty-one. Of our twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-six visitors, ninety-six point five percent came from outside of Carbon County. We bring a lot of people into Rollins. We also had a hundred and twenty-nine dogs and two cats take our tours. The hundredth birthday party for the Historic Guardsquarters in July saw two hundred and fifty-two people checking out the progress made in the Guardsquarters, eating and drinking and listening to live music. In twenty twenty-two, the Masquerade had fifty-seven attendees that danced the night away to Still House Blues while enjoying beverages and snacks. The Haunted Halloween Night Tours were extremely successful with seven hundred and twenty-six paid participants and twenty-eight hardcore volunteers that put in one thousand and fifty-six man-hours of work. The Christmas Out of the Big House Bazaar saw five hundred and thirteen participants. The Old Penn participates in community events and services such as a city walking path that winds up to the prison cemetery, the Rollins Community Garden, which we will be opening really soon, and, uh, we participate in the City of Rollins Cleanup Day. Old Penn staff members serve with the state and local organizations such as the Mountain Plains Museum Organization, Colorado Wyoming Association of Museums, Carbon County Wyoming State Historical Society, Rollins Tourism Committee, and the Friends of the Old Penn. Currently, we offer tours at ten thirty AM and one thirty PM, Monday through Thursday. Our full season will begin on May twenty-seventh, when we will be open seven days a week, and we offer eight tours every single day. The Ninth Annual Halloween Masquerade will be held on October twenty-first, which is a Saturday night this year, so please come. This is a gathering featuring hors d'oeuvres, adult beverages, dancing, and a spooky fabulous atmosphere on the eve of Halloween. And then, of course, it'll be time for our Haunted Halloween Tours, which this year will be on October twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and thirty-first. We offer thirty-three tours over the course of these three nights for a frightfully good time. Our Halloween Tours are one of the largest Halloween attractions in Wyoming. So far in twenty twenty-three, work is continuing with the Historic Guardsquarters, even though we applied for and were rejected from much-needed funding through the ARPA Local Government Projects Grant. We know many members of the City Council and the City of Rollins have not yet seen the progress of, that has been made in the Guardsquarters. The Old Penn Joint Powers Board and the staff would love to show you all around at your earliest convenience. Let me know. We have been open for tours during one of the most difficult winters we have ever sustained, and right now, we're having a little bit of issue with flooding from the snow melt. Uh, we awarded the Mark J. Satright Scholarship to tour guide Sarah Stipe. Old Penn Joint Powers Board members and staff attended the City of Rollins Board Training on March ninth and TIPS Training on April seventh. We are planning a new summer event called Sunset at the Slammer. Join us for a midsummer escape at the Wyoming Frontier Prison. This new event will be on July fifteenth, and it will include a disc golf tournament, a Maker... a makers market, food, drinks, and Still House Blues. And we are seeking new staff members and preparing for another busy summer of tours. The Old Penn Joint Powers Board is requesting thirty-five thousand dollars in funding from the City of Rollins this year, which is the same amount the Old Penn Joint Powers Board requested last fiscal year from the City of Rollins and Carbon County. Carbon County provided thirty-five thousand to the Old Penn Joint Powers Board for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. That much-needed boost from Carbon County allowed, allowed the Old Penn Joint Powers Board to compensate their professional staff with a more competitive wage, have many trees professionally trimmed to extend their lifespan, and continue work in the Historic Guards' Quarters. Along with preserving the interesting and vital history of the Wyoming Frontier Prison, the Old Penn Joint Powers Board is committed to growing Rollins' economy. As Ari stated, our visitors contributed approximately eight hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars to our local economy in two thousand and twenty-two. We cannot function without the City of Rollins' assistance with operating funds. Operational funding includes marketing, wage costs for staff, office supplies, insurance, utilities, lawn care, and ongoing repairs. These things are necessary to keep the Wyoming Frontier Prison a safe and attractive site for our staff and our guests. Along with providing our fabulous tours, we'll be maintaining the grounds all year long, mowing the five acres of irrigated lawn, and increasing our visitation numbers by implementing additional marketing efforts, including a much-needed update to our website. The funding we need, we receive from the City of Rollins allows the Wyoming Frontier Prison to function as the important community and visitor resource that we are. Every year, we try to expand the services we provide to our community. The Wyoming Frontier Prison Staff spends a lot of time writing grants for projects and programs, and we are awarded a majority of the grants we apply for, but finding operational funds is nearly impossible. We really do need your help. The Old Penn Joint Powers Board and the Wyoming Frontier Prison greatly appreciates all the support we receive from the City of Rollins, and as always, we look forward to working with you. Do you have any questions for us?
I have a question. So, on the sheet that I have in this book, it says that in twenty-one, twenty-two, you asked for twenty thousand and for twenty-two, twenty-three, you asked for twenty thousand. And then on this sheet, I have twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty thousand, and then twenty-three, twenty-four, thirty-five thousand. And you said you had, we asked for thirty-five thousand last year? You've got thirty-five thousand?
Yes. So, in eighteen, nineteen-
So, I'm wondering where the confusion is.
In eighteen, nineteen, we were awarded fifteen thousand. And then nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, we were awarded twenty thousand. So, we've gotten twenty thousand from the city for the last two, two, three, four years.
And this year, you want thirty, thirty-five thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's also important for the council to understand where this funding would go to. For example, Tina clarified, marketing is a big thing. For example, I can't speak to it, but perhaps Tina can answer. For example, billboards, there used to be billboards that were up that helped to attract a lot of visitors. And right now, there hasn't been the funding. Tina, can you speak to how much billboard advertising costs?
I don't know, because we haven't tried for the last three years, because three years ago, we were budgeted out of it.
And I think it, what was it, even three years ago? Do you, do you recall about four thousand per board? And there were three boards?
No, two boards. We used to get funding from the Visitors Council that would cover the billboards. And billboard prices went up so much that we started having to supplement on top of the Visitors Council. So, I think the last year that we got billboards, the two billboards, and the one was significantly smaller on each, east and west. I think the two of them together were about seven thousand.
For the year?
And so, those billboards do provide a lot of, I mean, because people aren't always, if they're passing through Rollins, but they see a billboard for something really cool like the Old Penn, like, well, let's cruise by. So, it'll give people a reason to, to do a detour. So, those are some, you know, that's some of the expenses that we're looking for. So, it's not, you're not just hearing that there's this, you know, a bigger number from last year. This, these are the reasons, this, these are the costs that are associated with the increase. And we haven't been able to do those billboards or do that type of marketing because we haven't had the funding. And it's also important to, you know, on these events that we've had, the, the Halloween Tours and events, the majority of the visitors are from out of town. So, they are coming here specifically from out of town to these events. The event that we have this summer, this is the Sunset at the Slammer, it is in conjunction with a disc, a disc, Frisbee Disc Tournament that is being put on by a gentleman out of Cheyenne who has a following and they're, it's a two, and it might even be a three-day tournament?
It's a two-day.
It's a two-day tournament. Part of it's gonna be in Washington Park, the second part is at the Penn. So, there will be visitors that are staying the night. And this is, these are all part of our efforts to try to bring people in to stay the night, to help with the economic.
I would touch too on what Tina said about, you know, remaining competitive with our pay. We, we did give our staff a raise this year to try to keep up with inflation and other things that way. So, that's part of our, you know, that we use the money for too, is to, to pay them to, to do the good job that they do for us, you know? So, it's important to notice, you know, we are, we are, you know, we are affected by inflation, just like everybody else out there, so.
And as well as being able to retain talent, passionate talent.
We, we all understand that, just, you know, and I, I don't know how we're gonna end up here. Needless to say, we're not floating in money either. And so, I'm not, I, I have no idea where we're gonna end up here, but, you know, we'll, we'll do our best. That's all we can do. The, the old, that's one of the biggest jewels in our town is the old, is the Old Penn. Nobody else has one. We have it. It's the one. It's better than anything else in the state. It's better than Laramie's. It is the one. And we have the largest, uh, audience of probably almost anybody else in the state, and that's our interstate. And so, when you say billboards, I understand, they don't work for some businesses. They would really work well for, for this, this tourist opportunity, is what I'm gonna call it. Yeah. I've always enjoyed the Old Penn. You know, I, actually, when I moved here, there were people I worked with that were in the Penn, in that Penn. You know? And then when I got my first tour, I was like, oh my God, I felt sorry for them, but now I really feel sorry for them, you know? But it is unbelievable that, that is, that is where they housed inmates. When, when did they quit?
Nineteen eighty-one.
Eighty-one?
Yeah, nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-one.
Yeah, there, there, we had work relayers that would work and they would come and tell the stories about, you know, freezing half to death, because they, in the winter, they got a blanket. And, yeah. But we have the one, the real one, you know? And it's, it's always stuck out to me that that's what it is. Other towns would kill for that attraction.
They can't have it.
Nope.
And some did.
Yeah. Well, and the one in Laramie's nice, don't get me wrong, but it doesn't have the, really just doesn't have the history that Rollins just does, you know? And when you, you know, the big-nosed George, the big-nosed George story, I hate that story. I, like, I never thought to make a pair of shoes out of my neighbor, but someone did. And that just creeps me out, man. But, like Butch Cassidy and all, you know, just everything that we have going at the Penn, it's just, where else you gonna find it? No place else in Wyoming, really.
You guys have done a wonderful job on the quarters.
Thank you.
It's just amazing, and I think that will help a lot when you have events and, and those types of things. I also remember a billboard that said, "Come visit the Penn, spend time with us."
Yeah, "Come do time."
Yeah.
It's our little, one of our catchphrases, yeah.
And I know the Haunting House is, is very popular. I know some people are disappointed because they can't get here, because, you know, we have the occasional October snowstorm.
Yeah.
Have you thought about doing, I don't know, haunting in June, like Christmas in July?
Yeah, one of our suggested it, and they almost all became residents. Halloween a year is enough.
It is a lot of work.
Like I said, we had twenty-eight people this year, the smallest number of volunteers. I'm sure everybody else has noticed that volunteerism is definitely down.
Yeah.
And I can't, I mean, like I said, they donated, twenty-eight people donated over a thousand hours to put up Halloween.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, and we can't do it twice.
Those Halloween tours are so fun.
Amazing.
Yeah, they're a blast.
Just amazing.
We do do Friday the thirteenth tours from time to time. So, those are kind of, you know, something that's not Halloween-related, but they're a scary tour that they do in the night type of thing.
Yeah.
That's, that's a fun tour.
That's kind of fun, too.
People can't make it in, you know, in October, whatever.
And we do ghost investigations. I'm already getting emails for ghost investigations, so, yeah. The spirit world's very popular.
That's good. Good for business.
It is good for business. It makes our guys not so lonely.
Any other questions or comments? I think we're done. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your-
Thank you.
Hard work.
Catch up for your time?
Yep, thank you.
That's a good deal.
Right, right.
I might get some sleep tonight.
You what?
Might get a little more sleep tonight.
Yeah.
Gonna make you wait till eight, ten, sorry. No, I'm kidding.
Wait, I missed what you said.
I'm gonna make you wait till eight, ten.
Till eight, ten?
That's when, that's when your schedule-
I'm like, it's eleven minutes!
I'm kidding you. Alright, Pam, let's, let's hear the sales pitch.
You guys like heard me last night, like, feel like every day. Okay, I will be official, sorry. Honorable Mayor and Council, first of all, and I say this all the time, but I, I wanna thank this council for their support, this current council, and all the past councils. I mean, we are successful because of your extreme support, but, you know, it, it's, it's widespread. I was doing some calculations, I always do calculations before this, but just so I know what our ROI is as a program. And we have over, in the last, and I kind of, I know what we did before my tenure of seventeen years. It'll be seventeen years on May twenty-fifth of next month. But, so thirty-two years as an organization, but in the last seventeen years, we've had over fifty thousand hours of volunteer to the organization. And you, we use a national sector calculation for grants and for reporting to the state and everything. And so, I averaged like what it was seventeen years ago and what it is now, which is thirty-two dollars an hour. And that correlates to about one point four million dollars in volunteer hours. Extremely successful because of the industry's support and businesses in and out of the district. You know, some of our biggest supporters are industry, and that's great, but it all takes teamwork to do that. And so, yeah, I just, it's, I always say, it's a tribe. You know, we've tried a lot of programs and events, and some of them have been amazing. Some of them didn't quite work how we thought they would work, and we had to reinvent them, and sometimes they, you know, hit a home run. And so, Main Street Money, Kids Corner, I think probably four years ago, three years ago, when we put up the ice rink, and Ashley Mayfield Davis said, "I feel like I'm in a Hallmark movie." I was like, okay, I'm done, you know? But just things like that. And even going back to Money Mania in the summer of two thousand and twenty, the list goes on, but just making sure that we're staying relevant and we're doing things that's the best for the community. Because I've always said, the downtown may be a district, and that's where we, we never, we never stay in our own playpen. But it's not like we put up a box and nobody can come in. It's a community-driven, it's the core of the community. I really, you know, last night, I, I kind of added some things, but I, again, being here seventeen years, it's pretty amazing, Maverick, Starbucks, the micro-living, the Home Express delivery, I mean, those are so many more in the hopper. But, you know, in the last week, I've, I've met two new business owners that are coming into the downtown, and I have three more that have called me coming into the downtown. It's just like, almost like kind of a frenzy. It's, you know, I had some, I had Jim Draver from SBDC call me today, and he goes, "Is your phone ringing off?" And I said, "Yeah." He said, "Mine too." But I also wanna, it's important to realize that existing businesses and the support we give into the existing businesses and how they've grown over the years, and watched how their sales have increased, or a good example is on Black Friday, used to be the worst sales day in the downtown, almost in record for our businesses, because everybody would go out of town, they'd leave. And now, Blue Plaid Friday is one of their biggest days that they have in the year. And just watching those transitions and making sure we're staying relevant. So, that's exciting. You know, continued investment in their properties that they've done, whether it was a facade or, you know, I just had somebody call me, say, "We're gonna put all new windows in our downtown business. Can you help me make sure I do it historically? It's a historical register, or it's contributing to our historic district? Yes, let's make sure we're not, you know, devaluing your property." So, just there's, you know, every time I turn around, there's a little, you know, something new that's happening. I was reading this article about, three weeks ago, about the top recruiters in the United States continue to stress when you, that now that people can work from home more and remotely, what the top five things, and two of the five things that recruiters are looking for going into new municipalities or businesses should be looking at is, there is what their brand is and the location where they're picking. And so, I think that's really relevant, that we continue to work on the core of this downtown, and that another thing that the downtown is your living room, you know, that's your meeting space, that's that one place that everybody comes. So, Darryl, I'm gonna put you on the spot, because when you started a few years ago, you asked me, "So, when are you guys gonna be done?" And I thought, and that's really stuck with me in the last couple of years, and my answer is, and I think I said it then, is, "We're never gonna be done," but I think it gets different. Just like I said, we have to be resourceful. We have to take current situations, like the geofencing we've done, staying on top of the newest trends and, you know, and doing that research. I think one of the biggest things recently and in the, this last year is, I'm very proud as, proud of, is the Business Innovation Hub. I know that Steve gave, or excuse me, Mayor Singer, Vice Mayor Singer gave the, you know, two to five a week, you know, averaging three a week, that we're having, I met with a, a guy today, and he was so excited that, you know, that we were helping with his business plan and if he should go with sole proprietorship or should he go with LLC, and he just felt like he had help. And it was really cool. This is a young guy, he graduated from Rollins High School in two thousand and seventeen, and he's planning on starting his own business. And so, that's really cool. So, I think, you know, the Business Innovation Hub and then the Startup Challenge is another really good thing that has happened in the last year. Something that I did recently, and you guys have a pretty big packet for me, when I submitted the request, I really showed, there were six points, what the DDA and the Main Street does, and probably one of the biggest things is protecting our existing tax base, that we don't want to, you know, we can build a really nice house, but you have to maintain it, and we want to keep it up. So, really making sure that we're putting out programs that were protecting the existing, existing tax base. I already talked about the Business Innovation Hub, and that is gone. I never believed that just by rebranding and making sure people realized that that building was for everybody in Carbon County and that we serve everybody in Carbon County. And that was something very important to this council on, on one thing is that those resources were for all the businesses and not just for the downtown. And then, of course, attracting economic development. Point number three, not gonna, you guys have all this, but provides a point of focus and stability. I was joking with Bev today, I called her for something, and I said, "Well, I think you and Galen and I are still the only originals around seventeen years," and just showing that stability and continuing to grow on that stability. And then Tina spoke of it a little bit, but I always push that, is to preserve the historical fabric of the community, you know, that heritage travel, those people that want to come down and see. And then, always, always improving the economic conditions of the downtown and just really core. And so, when I, correlating our goals, the DDA's goals, Main Street's goals, the Board of Directors' goals, with what the, what the City Council wants and how we can grow as a community. You know, seventeen years of working for this organization, we've received, you know, over five, almost five point five million dollars in grants and funding, and that doesn't even count the, the non, what I call the ripple effect, all the events we've done, and that's hardcore numbers that I can say, you know, by doing this, we've fundraised this, by doing this, we got this grant. You know, I-